Good evening, welcome to the March fifteenth Board of Selectmen's meeting. If you'd please stand and join the pledge of the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where there is a stamp, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its hands.
This meeting is being audio and video recorded and will be done on local access television. We'll skip down to the APM budgets, David if you are.
Yep, so moderator budget is up a couple hundred dollars because he's requesting it's only it's a small budget, but he's requesting a couple hundred dollars for printing. The insurances right now, the insurances we're looking at a five percent increase. Sealer of weights is a minimal increase, it's a small budget. Historical commission, look at him for twenty-five dollars more, it's a seventy million dollar budget. The benefits budget is a large budget, if we could swing to that one. So the benefits budget is one of our larger budgets in town. Two things of note that I want to bring it up is that contributory retirement is set by, it's really set by state law, but it's set through Plymouth County. The idea is to have all retirement funded in whole by 2033, and at that point this line should drastically be reduced. But this year you can see it's a twelve and a half percent increase. Again, we don't, we don't set that, that just comes from them. And then in health insurance, the one piece of good news is that we turn these budgets in at the end of January in a budget of seven percent increase, but it got rated and it looks like it's going to be between a four and a half and a five percent increase. That number will be a little bit lower when I actually go through the final budgets. And then the health accident fire insurance, that just went up a little bit as well. You know, just unfortunately, if you have claims, it goes up.
I'm really surprised by the health insurance, our office saw thirty-four percent increase this year. So that's great.
Yeah, no, it's, I figured, we were initially told seven, but after they rated it. So pretty happy with that, but it's a big budget, so, you know, but.
Right, right.
So anyway, so those are all of those budgets, and then I also placed in your packet, we met yesterday at Capitol Budget, Mary's representing the Board of Selectmen there. So these are all of the requests that came in. These have not been voted yet as to whether or not they are going to be recommended. The Selectmen will have the final call when you make your vote in April as to what's going to be placed on the warrant, because you could choose to place all of these on, some of them on, or none of them on, regardless of what the recommendation is. But you can see in front of you as to what all the requests are. And, so again, I just placed in the packet, so that way you had three or four weeks' notice in advance as to what might be coming. And Mary, I don't know if there's anything you want to speak to it?
No, just to point out probably the water department being the biggest one, which makes sense. It sounds like that's what we need, just kind of a heads up that it's coming.
How much time do they have in grants and funds coming to them that we, pretty concrete? We've got the one point, two, one point three from the county.
Correct, so we had one point three from the county and so far we set aside two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, which took care of the short-term remediation, I think that's what we was talking about yesterday. So towards the debt, we allocate a hundred percent of the town's ARPA funds of one point three million dollars earmarked exclusively for that project.
Okay, so we have roughly two and a half million between the two, between the county and the town? No?
No, just one point three million. And then two hundred and seventy-six thousand you allocated for the short-term fix.
Okay, I thought there was more from the town, because Plymouth County was the one point.
Yep, so Plymouth County is, so total to town was about seven hundred, and you allocate two hundred and seventy-six thousand, but so far.
Okay.
So that's going to leave you a balance of about four hundred thousand dollars.
Everybody with these budgets?
Yeah, I don't have any questions.
Is it just you from Southeastern? Or are you waiting for the bell?
It is, it's my cell.
Alright, if you want to come on up?
Oh, awesome.
Yeah, we're ready. How's everything?
Oh, well, good evening.
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
Honey, I tell my kids every time we go by Southeastern, that's where Bronte went, and when you were babies, we checked it out too.
Alright, yeah, sorry Superintendent couldn't be here tonight, she's actually at our advisory meeting at the school tonight, so. I'll be presenting our budget. Did everybody? Yeah, we'll be getting a copy.
Thank you.
Perfect.
He might.
How are you doing?
Oh, excellent.
Well, thanks. So, my name is Mark Morris, assistant superintendent of finance over at the school. Our school meeting last night voted our budget, so it is up voted. I know it says recommended, but at the time we were getting the paperwork over, it wasn't voted yet, so approved last night. And on the first page you can see, the total foundation budget will be thirty-four million, seven eighty-six, six fifty-one, made up of state aid and twenty-two million, one thirty-four, three oh six, and local assessments of twelve million, six fifty-two, three forty-five. The middle section is the student transportation, which every year I always mention should be funded at a hundred percent by the state, but unfortunately they do not fund it at that level. Last year was at eighty-six percent, which was higher than what we've normally seen by the end of the year. So the total cost of transportation for FY twenty-four is going to be one million, eight seventy-nine, two hundred. The state aid that we've received was one million, one sixty-four, one thirty-eight, leaving the difference for local assessments at seven fifteen, oh sixty-two. So you do see state legislatures, representatives, senators, let them know that it's important, regional transportation is important to the towns, because if that was funded at a hundred percent, the local assessment for the town should be at zero, because they should be funding that a hundred percent.
So does that mean they're only funding it at sixty-two percent?
Roughly, that's what we're looking at for FY twenty-four. Again, that can always change in the governor's budget, but that's where we're at right now.
So eighty-six last year, and down to sixty-two this year?
Roughly sixty-two is what we're projecting.
Wow, okay.
So again, yeah, so again, we see the legislators, representatives, senators, it's always an important thing to talk about, let them know how important it is to the town. Then again, we have our capital acquisition, our MSBA project, if you recall, probably about now, back in two thousand and eleven we finished roughly the expansion renovation to the school. So that's been at a hundred and ninety-two thousand, again, so that's, since I approved it at the school since two thousand and nine, that assessment's always been the same to the town, that hasn't changed. So again, the school is keeping that at one ninety-two. Giving this FY twenty-four budget at thirty-six million, nine sixty-six, six oh one. So we're at a seven percent increase from the prior year. And that's at minimum net school spend, that's what we're required to spend by the state.
Wow, and that's up seven percent.
Seven percent, correct.
Interesting.
So our next page goes over some of the enrollment numbers for the towns and the city. So obviously West Bridgewater looks like stayed pretty, pretty much the same, that sixty-five students or one student from last year. And that represents roughly four percent of our total enrollment at the school, which is one thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven students. And we're up six students overall from prior year.
I hear it's getting competitive to get in.
Well, it's, we have roughly four hundred and twenty spots for freshmen, and we have over a thousand, eleven, eleven hundred applicants, yeah, it's.
It's a big difference from twenty years ago.
What happened in Easton? Did you have a surge of students graduate?
No, so Easton looks like there was a, did you, I didn't look at that earlier?
Yeah.
It looks like they have a decrease overall in enrollment, so I'm not just sure of the populations, the cycle of their population. They have a downturn in total enrollment overall in town in Easton.
Oh, okay.
So not just at the location, but the whole town itself's down.
Yeah, that's a significant decrease.
Yeah, eighteen students. And then Stone was up thirteen students.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, we see some shifts there obviously. So the next page, obviously the most important page probably is like what's our assessment for FY twenty-four? So you can see that the FY twenty-four assessment of West Bridgewater is eight hundred and fifty thousand, oh sixty-four, and that's up twenty-five thousand, eight oh six from the prior year. And assessments are up four point eight percent from the prior year. And that's overall. Next page, a fun fact you kind of look at. Every student at Southeastern costs the same, whether they're from West Bridgewater, East Bridgewater, Stone, Mansville, City of Rockton. This just shows what the state pays and what the towns are required to pay. Basically, the state pays the red, the towns pay what's in the blue. The red and the green are amounts we can't touch, so that's the required transportation, required cost to educate the students, all, all the required minimums by the state. The only sliver that we have is that very top sliver, which is that capital cost, means that we can actually take a look at it, that could be changed. Other than that, those are all required costs. And every town, the city pays the same, it's just the difference is how much of the state kick in and how much the town and the city pay. And that's obviously based on your homeowner, you know, values of properties in town, income tax returns, and then we've got a two-year lag period. So, you know, if you recall, two years ago, real estate market was well, jobs were well, so the economy was in a good place. So obviously the state's saying that West Bridgewater, that you can afford a little more than some of the others and a little less than, you know, the city or something, but you could afford somewhere to pay your state share. And you'll see that if you go two pages in, that town West Bridgewater, they're saying is below target. So the target share being fifty-nine point six five for the town, the state said that you're at forty point three five percent. So they have like a little catch-up period for you there as well to get you back to.
What does that mean?
Based on your growth and town wealth, that there's a good target share towards education should be fifty point six five percent of your equalized evaluation.
So we're over-contributing what you're saying?
You're, you're under-contributing.
Under.
Under-contributing, got it.
So they're stepping up the catch-up period a little bit more to get you caught up to where you should be, is what they're saying.
And they're, they're calculating median, median home value in here anywhere?
Correct, in equalized valuation, they'll have all that, to get that formula, you probably have to go to the state to get that formula, but it's all included there. Home values, income tax returns, the values of residents, and their properties, and obviously what they're paying and their income.
Loving this economy even more.
And if you go back one page, it just shows you there, as I said, this shows you the trend. The dark blue line is the actual net school spending that Southeastern has to be at to meet net school spending. And the, I don't know which one, the dashes are the required actual school spending. So those are both parallel to, so we're at the minimum. So Southeastern isn't spending more than what's required. And we, we take that very seriously, we know that, you know, that we detrimental to the towns and the city, so we make it work on what's required and the number that we have to spend to make our budget work. And the rest of the page is really some informational, so it looked like, like you were asking about Easton, looks like in West Bridgewater, your enrollment is at eleven ninety-five, so it's up from eleven sixty-three. Overall enrollment's up in the town, looks like, for all school age children.
Kids are expensive.
Is that good to say?
And the next couple pages again, just some informational information about, you know, the town. This is all ran at the Palmer Events website that we've received. And then obviously that last page is the required to the actual spending. So you can see where West Bridgewater is above their, their required spending there, obviously.
So when you're counting enrollment, are you, are you counting students that are just residents of West Bridgewater? Or are you including school choice in the enrollment?
We don't, we don't have school choice.
No, I, well, I was looking at this, you said you were comparing the DESI numbers, which is West Bridgewater information.
Well, yeah, so I'm not, so you would, I guess, does that include the school choice? And I'm not sure what your enrollment is without school choice.
Okay, okay.
They don't break it out there for us, I'm going to presume this includes your school choice numbers?
Okay.
I couldn't say that for sure, I'm not positive. But it does say that the total enrollment of FY twenty-four, from pre-K to high school. Is one thousand, one hundred and ninety-five students.
Is that information two years behind as well, or is that?
No, no, that's current information. What they base the assessments on is the property values, income tax returns.
That's two years.
Correct. So the rest is really disinformational, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Any questions?
No, I don't have any, thank you for coming in.
No, thank you. Okay, if you haven't been to the school, please stop by, we'd love to take you through, have you, I don't know if you've had a chance to take a look at our new.
I haven't seen the new performing arts center yet, it was your invitation when I was on finance committee, they called me to come in. It was great to see.
Love to have you over.
Thanks.
Go out to the boom shop, we'll have some lunch.
I want to come for lunch.
Yeah.
It looks really good.
You're doing a great job.
Seen them measure.
Very good job.
They do, they do.
But thank you for your support, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, thank you, have a good night.
You too.
Are you guys waiting for anyone else, or are you ready?
Kathy Kramp.
She's right there.
Oh, she's right here, and Donna.
Do you want to wait for Donna? We can't, or?
We reached a couple minutes, thank you.
Alright, we will go down to the meeting minutes of December seventh, is there much to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. And accept the meeting minutes of January eleventh and January twenty-fifth and February first for review.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Annual town report certification, we have. Who are there? For Linda, there were one, two, three, four, five notable deaths in twenty-two. I think it should be dedicated to Bruce Holmquist up until the day he died, he was serving on a number of committees.
Yeah, second thought, I mean, I'm sure everyone is deserving, Bruce is just a little bit more to me.
Yeah, I mean, up until his last day, he was serving on.
Absolutely.
Three or four.
I agree, is there a motion?
Um, make a motion that we, well, are we putting in the face the names? Don't we have to talk about listing the names?
Yeah, so we usually do, or sometimes I guess we do, one is the dedication, and then we, the other names will be listed, right?
Yeah, so we can do, we can say, you know, dedicated to Mr. Holmquist, and a special thanks, or a special tribute, and we can list the other, the other ladies and gentlemen there on there.
I think that would be fair, so moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, we have an application for a transient vendor for April eighth, April ninth, May thirteenth, May fourteenth.
Is this the same? Yes, it is. So it's the same gentleman that comes every single year, this will be at the South Main Street Plaza, they'll be selling flowers, he normally does, the dates are in April, not in May. Traditionally, it's for Patriots Day, Memorial Day, Mother's Day, that type of stuff. So he's done it every single year, you don't have any issue with it, do you?
No, nothing's good.
No issue from the office.
Okay, so a motion to.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, we have two proposed bylaws, David, do you want to go over these?
Sure, so this first one is, is in reference to elected officials. What this would do is that this would create a bylaw that if you were a full-time paid employee in town, that you would not be able to run for an elected official, or elected office. That went before the bylaw study committee, they reviewed it, and then they've obviously sent it over. We normally present these when we go over the warrant articles, but because we received them earlier, we want to make sure the board had them early, you don't have to vote on it tonight. They'll just be placed at a future date on the warrant if you so choose, so that's number one. And the second one is to allow for mixed use in our business area, in our business zone. So this would allow that if you want to have a business on the first floor and have residential dwelling on the second floor, we do not currently allow that anywhere in town except for in our center town district. This would allow it for anywhere that's in our business zone. And we did place a map in here, you can see those yellow areas, which is basically Route one oh six and Route twenty-eight, that's where our business zone is. That dark green area is our center of town, that's where it is allowed right now. That vote from the bylaw study committee was three to two, again, I wasn't there, but that tells me that there must have been a little bit more of a contentious discussion on that one. But again, that would be for your review, so in a couple of weeks, you'll have the opportunity if you want to place those on the warrant or not.
Just a quick question on the first bylaw, part C, could that be a typo? Because it says when holding a position on an elected committee, committee member, member hired in a paid position within the town must vacate the committee position. Did that, was that intended to be a full-time paid position?
It is definitely for paid, it's, it's full-time, because section four starts as no full-time paid employee, and A says no full-time employee.
Okay.
So I have to ask them, and I, 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 you know, so are you looking to confirm that that should say full-time paid?
Yeah, I do, and I only bring it up because part A specifies full-time, but part C doesn't. Um, so, you know, I knew, I knew that was their intention, and they did say it in section four first sentence, but they, they repeated again in part A, but left out in part C, so just for the sake of consistency.
Sure, I'll, I'll reach out to them.
Okay.
Any other questions on these?
No, no, I don't have any.
Alright, who wants to take over from here?
I don't think I see this seat in front of there, just sort of.
Of course.
Small type here, so. We do have some slides, so thank you for the opportunity to present section A time, which is going to be. If you have questions, please stop me, and I can further explain it, or one of the committee members, Mr. Grant, can explain it. And at the end, we can go to our overview of our budget portfolio. So again, we're a mission-driven school, so we try to follow the mission of the West Bridgewater Public Schools with every decision that we make. It's always focused around the kids' improvement and their growth. When we look at creating a budget, we look at all that goes into creating a budget. That's the priorities, which are district and school priorities. We look at goals, from my educational, educational goals to principals, administrators, and students, to social emotional health of all of our students, and obviously student achievement, we want them all to be working together. And I try to focus on one, it's a continual effort of everything. As we've created budgets over the past couple of years, we've looked to go from essential budget creating, which has been more reactive coming out of COVID, to looking to get more strategic and more proactive. We have needs that we, you know, need to have addressed within our schools. I wish I could say that it's simply wants, but it really needs that our students and our staff have to get us to really need to be. So again, we try and be very strategic in getting there. The next slide is going to show you some data, and I, we've got data that came in the past ten years. So the first slide talks about high-need students, and again, it's a ten-year look. When the state determines high-needs, and these are all taken directly from DESI, it's special education numbers, our English language learners, and our low-income. You'll see those subsequent slides and divide out each of those, but you'll see a very significant increase over the past three years. Leading from two thousand and fourteen to nineteen, about one of four students was considered high-needs, now more than one out of every three students is considered high-needs, they fall into one of those categories. So the needs of our students have increased tremendously. Now, this isn't just in West Bridgewater, this is across the state as well, but we're seeing a tremendous increase.
Did you say one out of three?
Yeah, we've got thirty-three, thirty-six percent of students.
One out of three gets considered.
Considered high-needs.
Oh my God, who makes those, who sets those?
I'll show you in a minute, I'll show you some of these slides, but, but, sorry, you know, students that they fall into one of those three categories, so special education, EL, or low-income.
Wow.
And that's also directly related to our chapter seven, that's part of the increase in our chapter seven, our enrollment going up, those are our high-needs going up. So the next one looks at our EL students, our English language learners. We are continuing to go up, this graph shows October first report in blue at the end of the year, so it's going to be FY, this year's end of the year. But our numbers continue to go up, just last week, we had six students move into the district, or EL students. It's almost a ten percent jump in one week, so, and it's, but we do, students move up. So it does, it is a give and take, but we're certainly taking more than we are having to move out. We've got a robust program, it's working well. I think families tend to want to be in the district and are moving into the district. These are not school choice students, these are students who are residing within West Bridgewater. Next, we are looking at special education data. It's kind of hard to see the numbers, but we're growing up, thank you, at the thirteen, over thirteen percent when we were, you know, around the ten percent model for, you know, seven or eight years. So the numbers do continue to increase. This includes our district students, so it's all special education students. And with more needy students, there's more expensive programs and placements and needs teachers use for assistants and so forth. We'll also talk a little bit later about the need for sub-separate programs. So we are developing a sub-separate program with the Roseville McDonald. So what that is, is it's a program, students have substantial needs, but we're still keeping them within the district. The cost to us is hiring a teacher and assistant, it would benefit if now these students are able to be educated in West Bridgewater, which is least restricted environment for now. And we're not paying out of, out of district tuition and transportation. So there's a cost, but there's also a savings. Next, we have our low-income, again, you'll see a big increase, you know, fourteen, fifteen percent up to the mid to high twenties. So, and again, this isn't just West Bridgewater, but this is certainly affecting us quite a bit. So those three numbers together, low-income, EL, and special education, if they fall into one of those three categories, they're not, they're in the high-needs category.
Wow.
So how does this correlate to spending? Like what, if it's a low-income family or a student, how does that correlate, what additional expenses do?
Well, it doesn't directly correlate, just because they're low-income, they may, you know, they may or may not receive services. But if they're high-needs, they're, you know, we may need, you know, we're showing the need for more adjustment counselors, more social workers, certainly potentially, you know, more educational staff to meet their needs.
And typically, if you look at socioeconomic status, you think about sociology, if you come from a low-income home, you're more likely to come from parents who are not educated, you are less likely to be read to at home, you're, there are a lot of things that we do as parents that provide the foundation. If you think about, you know, most students enter school at five, that's five years of education that parents are providing. And so a lot of times when students come from low-income homes, they are already on an uneven playing field because they are not performing where students from even moderate-income homes are. And so that is where we see the need for increased staff, we need, whether or not they qualify for special education, they may not actually qualify for special education because they're not identified with a disability, but they do need additional services to catch them up, to be on par with their peers. So that's how that translates to additional costs.
And demographics are definitely changing, they're trending up, so again, it's a definite need for us. We do want to share some good news, oh, I'm sorry, one more thing aside, oops, sorry, yeah, there you go. This is special education, so we talk about the needs for students, if you look at special education students. This is one where if you look at the blue is West Bridgewater, and it's the lowest two categories, the lowest two out of four categories of reporting on cast, and it's partially meeting and not meeting the standards. So the others are meeting and exceeding the standards. So as you notice in grades three day, in English, and grade three day math, from twenty-two to eighteen, the blue is higher or the same as their peers across the state, which are in red. So we don't want to be higher in this category, that means there's more of our special education students that are in the lowest two categories than their peers across the state who are also special education. So we're comparing special education student, special education student across the state. So again, we would want fewer West Bridgewater, we want that blue line to be a lot smaller to say that our students are achieving at the two highest levels, not at the two lowest levels. So this just shows you that, you know, we could use more services for our special education students to help them improve as well. And next, we have the population, so this shows the population growth. Over the past ten years, the typical. Over the past ten years, uh, it's been growing up consistently since two thousand and eighteen. October first was fourteen hundred and two, um, we just did our March first report, and we're fourteen, fourteen right now uh, in West Bridgewater, so those, uh, it just, again, continues to grow, uh, over the years.
This is organic growth?
That one?
This is, I mean, this is the growth within the, within the school year, yes, it's people moving into town.
But is it, is West Bridgewater students?
Fourteen, that's a total number, that includes school choice.
So this is school, okay, so the fourteen increase in school, includes school choice.
Yes. The fourteen?
Oh, I'm sorry, twelve.
Yes, yeah, no, no, sorry, that doesn't include school choice, that's this year, so we don't, we're not accepting school choice students during the year, so those are simply the ones.
Okay. Okay, so the twelve increase was organic?
Yes, thank you.
Did that go up a hundred students within five years?
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah, approximately, yeah, I mean, from eighteen to, yeah.
When I was on PTO, it was thirteen hundred students.
Mm-hmm, that's right around two thousand and eighteen.
Every class is a bubble class now.
Yes.
Oh God, that's awful.
I know.
And you'll see, you'll see our school choice numbers.
I mean, we love children, and we want to care for them, of course, but, anyway.
Right, but again, that does a direct impact on the number of school choice, so it's, we've taken this year and, excuse me, anticipated in the future.
Wow.
When did we start school choice?
Oh boy.
Twenty years ago?
Wait, twenty years ago?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's been a long time.
Um, next, we have a couple of slides that are showing some positive trends, um, our student attendance, down the lower left. West Bridgewater and Ollies are in red, this shows our attendance rate of our students is higher than the state average. Uh, and you'll notice that West Bridgewater and the state dropped in twenty-twenty-two, that was, that's coming out of COVID, um.
Oh, right, we had to keep the kids home when they settled.
Yeah, it's, correct, correct. But you'll notice that, no, we don't have the state data from twenty-twenty-three, but you'll notice that West Bridgewater is down around ninety-six percent. Uh, in the middle, we have a slide that shows our graduation rate, our four-year graduation rate, again, is consistently higher than the state average, um, in the mid, you know, high nineties. And then on the bottom right, it shows our dropout rate, uh, the state is actually in blue, so they're above us, and we are in red. Um, usually, you know, point two to point five percent of our class. So, the good news is our kids are attending, they're graduating, and they're not dropping out. That's the cost. Next slide has to do with special education, just goes in a little more detail, the slide is shown last year. Um, currently, only one point two percent of our population is placed in out-of-district placements, but that equals about twelve percent, about two million dollars in our budget, um, including transportation. Um, transportation costs can vary, uh, from about twenty-seven thousand up to ninety-one thousand, depending on distance travel, depending on, um, needs of the students, uh, and so forth, wheelchair van and so forth. And then you'll notice in the middle, it talks about different programs. So we send students to public school programs, like in East Bridgewater or Bridgewater Rainham, with a range thirty-five to forty-five thousand. Our collaborative programs, REEDS in North River, could have sixty-eight thousand. And our non, um, public private schools, sixty-five thousand to mid-three hundred, so, there's a lot of variability there. The last category on the right, as we'll talk a little later, um, was the OSD, um, Operational Service Division, raised all the private school tuitions by fourteen percent. When over the past ten-plus years, the average was about two percent. Again, this is a process state, this is something that we're working with the legislature to try to fix this, because it's a huge increase, uh, for West Bridgewater.
Oh, it works, yeah.
And all districts. And we are responsible, students from the ages of three to twenty-two, um, depending on what their plan is. And the placements they go to, the appropriate placements, they're made by a team, um, and they're the appropriate placements for them, um, but we're trying to lessen. I would love to be in the left-hand public school programs and tuition students in some of our, uh, our sub, sub-separate program. Figuring out this, or actually bringing in money, rather than spending it in the future. The next slide talks about school choice, the school choice is one of our school contributions. You'll look that, you know, we get budgeted two hundred eighty-five students this year, um, we are currently around two sixty-one. Um, creating a little bit of a, a, a gap already. Uh, the reason is we really couldn't take many to elementary, we took very, very few school choice in the elementary level because of our class size. And the concern of students moving in, like these fourteen, you really can't guarantee which grade level they're going into. So we're concerned about where they're going, and we don't want to overburden. It's always been the discussion with school choice, we don't want to take more students that negatively affect programs. But you'll notice we've budgeted for two sixty next year. We're about at that number now, we're graduating a high number, so we're going to try to fill them into the middle, senior high school mostly. Uh, and if students move out, we can keep a mass school choice, uh, as long as there's space in that grade. But really, moving forward, we're looking over the next three years after, to decrease by at least thirty in a year. To thirty, to a hundred, down to one seventy. Um, that may not be conservative enough, and they need to be more, but I think that's, um, as the population grows, as the number of homes are being built, the number of apartments become available, uh, we're going to find more students enrolling. The sad thing is we've had the most applicants, I think, we've ever had, we had a hundred and sixty applications this year. So, the good news is people want to come, we have the sad news that we have to deal with all calls of why, why are children in certain grades? Um, and I think, we'll talk about it later, but I think what this does, it creates a budget deficit for us. The more students we lose, the less school contributions that we have, and that's pretty significantly a lot of money that the school department's able to put in. So it doesn't become a burden on the town, we'll talk about that in a second. Next, uh, this is the school contribution, so on the left is FY twenty-four, the current budget, on the right is FY twenty-three. You'll see that there's an increase of, like, two hundred and seven thousand dollars in school contributions. Um, you'll notice that it's not coming from school choice, we were about sixty-one percent of one point five million in school choice last year. We're one million three hundred and fifty thousand this year. Uh, again, trying to be conservative in our numbers. So you notice that we're in circuit breaker, our revolving accounts, and our grants, we've increased the amount of money. Um, thankfully, some of them have increased, or we could do that, um, but it's, uh, as school just adds, high becomes smaller and school choice shrinks, um, the overall school contribution will inevitably have to go down. And that difference will have to be up somewhere.
So I'm going to jump in for chapter seventy, I don't want to go too in detail, I know that we've, we discussed it last year, but I do think it's important that we talk a little bit about how it's calculated, um, and why we've received such a substantial increase this year and over the last few years, um, because I do think that, uh, it's important for anybody who is watching this and needs to understand our budget and understand the needs of our student, really, of our students, really understands why the Commonwealth has identified that West Bridgewater needs more funding. Um, so you can see, we had a pretty big jump from fiscal year twenty-three of one point two million dollars um, that the state has identified that we should receive for chapter seventy. So those are preliminary numbers, but they don't tend to change once they pass through, um, the House and the Senate. So, we're expected to receive that money to the town earmarked for education. Um, so on the next slide, you can see, uh, where West Bridgewater is for fiscal year twenty-four compared to other districts. So you can see, of the districts that we're looking at, we had a twenty-two point six percent increase, um, in chapter seventy funding. The only district that we have here higher than that is Avon at twenty-nine point three percent. The state average is kind of in the middle at nine point eight percent. Um, so chapter seventy this year has increased, there's a lot more money going to districts this year for a variety of reasons. One of those reasons is, um, inflation, so that's where we see everybody growing, everybody's going to receive an additional um, amount of, uh, an additional percentage due to inflation. But, as Mark had referenced a few minutes ago, uh, our high-needs students are what are identified as needing additional funding because they need additional resources. So, um, there were some changes for fiscal year twenty-four, uh, the state identified increase in funding for, um, five different categories. So guidance and psychological services, um, special education out-of-district placements, low-income students, EL students, and, um, one other that I'm blanking on at the moment. Um, but you'll see, because we have such an increase, on those previous slides, you saw those line, um, graphs go up for West Bridgewater over fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four, you see that it's a direct correlation to the money that the state is sending our way to fund our education. So on the next page, you can see, um, this is a chart of how chapter seventy is calculated and how the budget is broken down. Um, Mark, did you happen to have a copy of the?
What?
Yeah, so we, we actually updated this slide to include fiscal year twenty-four, it just didn't make it into the packet. So we'll show you what fiscal year twenty-four actually looks like compared to the six years prior. Um, so the state calculates chapter funding, chapter seventy funding, by looking at eleven different categories. So they look at students across all grades, first of all, and then they have numbers that they, or a dollar amount that they assign to different levels. So, um, preschool, kindergarten, get a certain dollar amount per student that we have enrolled. And then those categories of EL students, low-income students, special education students, out-of-district special education students have a higher figure attached to them. And so that's why you see that our foundation budget, so our foundation budget is kind of that light blue plus the yellowy-orange, that's our foundation budget. That is what the state is saying we need to spend per student, we are required to spend to provide an adequate education, and I want to emphasize adequate, because we are not an adequate district. We do not want to provide an adequate education for our students. Um, so that's our foundation budget, then they go in and they look at our tax revenue, and they look at our demographics, and they say, okay, West Bridgewater should be able to, um, pay this dollar amount here, so that's that light blue number on the bottom. So we're required to spend the light blue and the orange, um, they are supplementing what we're required to spend based on what we're able to pay, and then, or based on our demographics, and then you can see the maroon bar at the top is our school contribution, so that's our school choice that we're using to supplement, our grants, our revolving accounts, and then that teal bar is the extra local contribution that we've spent, um, or that we're spending on our students. And so, Mark's going to speak in a minute about what PPE is, I know we've talked about this three years in a row, we won't, you know, beat a dead horse here, um, but we don't want that, those bars on the top to continually shrink. Because as those are continually shrinking, what it's saying is that we're getting closer and closer to an adequate education, and we don't want to be providing adequate, we want to be providing an exemplary education for our children. Okay?
So that's just for clarification, that's adequate based on dollars spent, not on the achievements our children are making, because obviously, based on the, the stats you've shown, they're, um, exceeding the state positively, very positively.
Well, not for our special education population.
Well, no, much, I'm just talking about when you showed us the rates for dropout
Mm-hmm.
for grades, for attendance, we're far above adequate.
We are, and that, but to me, that's, that's, that's the base, that's showing up, I know the kids showing up and graduating,
Okay. Sorry. Okay.
Um, but achieving and performing well on standardized tests, the AP test, and performing well as special education students or high-needs students, that's where we're, I think we're losing.
We're below adequate.
And I think what's really important to note about that, if we think about, and Mrs. Grant is going to go over everything in depth, when we look at our fixed costs, that we really have very little control over, it's special education. And so, we're, in many ways, robbing Peter to pay Paul. If we are providing an exemplary education to regular education students, but our statistics are showing we are not doing that in all cases for special education.
So the state, so if I understand this chart right, and I'm, I'm confused on it, the state's recognized we're failing these students, and it's giving us more funds for it.
Yep.
I wouldn't say they're failing, they're reckoning we have more high-needs students.
Yeah.
Yes, so.
Their, their needs are greater, and our numbers are greater.
Their formula does not take into account achievement. Their formula looks at just children's heads and what buckets they fall into, in, in terms of their demographics and their needs. They don't look at their achievements scores.
So the first few graphs that we saw, where that curve was going up, showing the high-needs students were increasing, that's contributing to a larger chapter seventy.
Yeah. So it's a number, it's not based on their importance.
Right, you've got more students who fall into these categories, if we're going to have more funding for them.
Okay, all right, all right. Okay.
And.
I was going to say, what are you doing?
So where we saw, the number of students that fall into the lower two categories for MCAS achievement,
Sorry about that.
that's where we need a little more help for the special education students.
Okay, all right.
And if we are not meeting their needs, then parents probably are going to look for somewhere else to send their children, and that's where we get to the expensive private schools to try and get their kids caught up,
Okay.
to try and make sure that they can, you know, graduate from high school and contribute to society.
Okay, so the one point two million dollars increase, is that, is that for special needs? No, that's overall, overall chapter seven.
That's for the, that's earmarked for education.
Okay, thank you.
And, and again, special education, but also related services, speech and language, um, it's, you know, adjustment counselors,
Okay.
social workers almost fall into that, you know, that, that bucket.
As a side note, someone had recently told me that it's no longer special education, it's considered student services, is that right?
That's right, so student services is kind of this umbrella that, um, encompasses not just special education, but five oh four students, so five oh four is not special education, it's civil rights. Um, uh, homeless students are considered student services, so that's kind of this broader, um, umbrella. And what's important to note is that we still have to provide, provide, we have to provide FAP, or a free, appropriate public education for all students. We hear about FAP more often with special education students because we have to modify the education as much as we do. But, um, students on a five oh four are, are protected under section five oh four of the special education law. Students, um, who are homeless are protected under McKinney-Vento, so those are federal mandates that we have to fund. And so, if we have to transport a student because they're homeless, but their last known residence was West Bridgewater, we have to pay to get them to school and provide them that education. So, and, and a lot of districts have moved in that direction and calling it student services and not special education. So we have a, so Mrs. Marvel is our student services director, not our special education director.
Oh, okay.
And student services is special education, civil rights?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, five oh four, and, what does that mean?
Yep.
Yeah.
So, five oh four plan is a plan for a student that needs, uh, some modification, but not necessarily an individual education plan.
Yeah, so what we call accommodations in the classroom, so if you think about what an accommodation would be, um, if you are in a wheelchair and you need, and, and when I say five oh four, we're talking about educational accommodations, we're not just talking about physical disabilities. You know, it might be something as giving someone a copy of the notes, or put, bringing them to a separate room so that they get the same exact test, but they're testing in a different setting because it's more quiet. Think of an accommodation as, um, the stepping stool we give so that they can see and receive the education. But we're not modifying the education that we're giving them, they're still accessing the same curriculum, just, you know, when I reach into the ca, every cabinet in my house, I need a stepping stool, that's an accommodation for me. If I move, I know, you don't have that problem, but if I move the cabinets, or we, we changed some way
Sorry, the money.
that I am actually, um, you know, we're changing something in the way that it's delivered, that's what special education is. Um, so, yes, five oh four, we're not actually modifying the curriculum, we're just getting them there by leveling the blanket.
It's all an act, accessing the curriculum, accessing the location.
So, a reasonable accommodation, not necessarily for a physical disability.
Right.
Correct.
Is that different from civil rights?
So, so five oh four is, um, it's civil rights, the section five oh four of the Civil Rights Act.
I think the next slide talks about, uh, per pupil expenditure. Um, and again, per pupil expenditure is, uh, a metric that DESI comes up with. They, they take basically all the information we have from any of your reports, um, and it's kind of dividing out everything involved. And it comes out with basically, you know, how much each district spends on students. Um, so we, we really have nothing to do besides just submitting reports at the end of the year. Uh, you look up everyone, um, on the school profiles. So when you, when you look at West Bridgewater, the next slide, compared to the state, over three hundred districts, um, you'll see that, we compared nine, FY nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, and that's the most recent data that they have on the website, is FY twenty-one. And you'll see we've gone from twenty-third from the bottom, to twelve, to ten from the bottom. And you see the percentages of, you know, amount spent. In the top right, you'll see what our per pupil is, is fourteen thousand five hundred ninety-five, and we're showing you just the state average, which is four thousand dollars more per pupil. Um, then we wanted to look at the regions, so we compared it to sixty districts in southeastern Massachusetts. Um, and the similar trends, uh, FY nineteen, we're fifth from the bottom, FY twenty-fourth, and FY twenty-one, second from the bottom. and FY twenty-one, second from the bottom, and the only one below us is a K to eight district. The average of southeastern Mass is a little bit lower, so it's a little bit closer to ours, but still it's, well, three thousand dollars different per pupil. Now you take that per pupil and multiply it out by fourteen hundred students, it's quite a big number. We can actually do it in a second, so I'll save it, I'll save the time. And then finally, the other we compared to is our Desi DART districts. DART is a tool that Desi uses to compare like districts. Every district has a, has a number of DART districts. They do change over time. Some are nearby, some are in western Mass, some are a little bit bigger, but they have similar demographics. One of them, Fort Mills, that they use, so over the past three years, when compared to our other ten DART districts, West Bridgewater was the lowest of all those districts. And this just shows you a, here we are. We are in the blue circles. Notice it's starting out second from the bottom or right around there. Down the lowest is East Bridgewater, who back in FY twelve, I think was the lowest in the state. You'll see that we have gone up. I mean, we are progressing up and we are, our starting point was a lot lower. We did have a couple of years of dip down in FY eighteen to twenty and then back up a little bit. But you'll see East Bridgewater has climbed over us. On the left, you'll see some other districts. Now we picked Mills because it's been consistently a dark district for us, it's a similar district in size, also has school choice. There were thirty-eight hundred dollars per pupil above us. Easton is fourteen hundred or so above us. East Bridgewater is five hundred sixty-one. And then we did the southeastern Mass averages and the state averages. But if you look at, we're not expecting to get to the state average, which is nineteen thousand, because if you did that number, it would be daunting to look at it. But even an increase of six hundred to eight hundred dollars per pupil would be eight hundred forty to one point one million dollars more. So even if we can continue to get this number up by contributing more to the budget, it's going to help. Again, just wanted to continue to show that.
So we're against the per pupil expenses, they're at goal or what?
I, I think the goal is that we have needs and I think the more we can, the more we can increase our budget and our numbers are gonna stay, you know, pretty much the same. We don't have room for more, you know, much more, maybe more students, that the more the number goes up, the, the per pupil is naturally gonna rise with that. So I can't say a number, but I can say, that's why it's hard to, you know, I, that's just to show where we're at and what our needs are. And the more, we have more needs and over the past years we've been filling them, so we've been asking for more, more funding.
Yeah, I think it's just, it's an apples to apples comparison. It's a number that the state has calculated the, consistently across all districts. So that when we look at the line by line of the budget and we look at where we need increases, we can, it's explained. I mean, this explains, well, we need that increase because we are below, we're below where surrounding districts and where, you know, Millis is my favorite DART district. I've looked at the demographic, demographics of that town and it's very similar to West Bridgewater. So, you know, it just kind of gives the evidence of why we need to increase where we need to increase. Not throw blind money at it. I, I mean, we'd love that if you had a money tree. But, but if we have justified needs, you know, we need them to be funded.
And I know people's, the hottest choice effect is, and I, you know, one of the, I looked at, we're about eighteen point five percent school choice. Avon is a little bit higher, they're, they're in the low twenties, but their per pupil is about nineteen thousand dollars, so it's substantially higher. So it's, you know, it, it, it's, we're not losing because of school choice, because I don't want, it would have been down the other side as well. Next, showing overall school funding and just wanted to show where we're at in terms of the yellow is the West Bridgewater town contributions, comes from the tax revenue from the town. The red is our state funding, so chapter seventy funding, and the small school blue is our school contributions, school choice, grants, and revolving accounts. For years, we've been around that sixty, twenty-five, fifteen percent breakup. And if we look forward a little historically, we can look at the next couple of years. Thank you. We look at FY twenty-one and it's a little bit hard to see, we're at fifty-nine, twenty-five percent, about fourteen point seven. We are at fourteen point seven for school contributions and twenty-five point eight. So we're pretty close to those averages. And if you head to the right, you can look at FY twenty-two, you'll see that the blue stays about the same. The yellow is starting to go down and the chapter seventy money is starting to go up. Heading to the right again, you'll see those numbers changing again. Again, we're really benefiting by the chapter seventy going up and the, also the town's benefiting by the yellow going down because that's the amount, of the percentage of our overall budget that the town had to contribute. And then back down to the bottom left, the whole screen, you can see that for this budget, they were projecting fifty-two percent of the budget will be school contributions, thirty-four percent will be chapter seventy, and thirteen point nine percent will be school contributions. So the takeaway, if you look at the whole screen, is that over the past four years, the town has been able to decrease by seven and a half percent. The chapter seventy increased by eight point three and school contributions have over time decreased by point eight. So in one way, it's good because the town has had to contribute, been able to contribute less and because we benefited from the chapter seven. But it's, it's creating, you know, more of a gap. This shows percentages, we showed this last year as well, we just updated it, that over the past three years, not including the shift, we don't have the total numbers. But the school budget is averaged about thirty-nine percent of the overall town budget. And then the bottom, you'll see that where other districts fall, some are very similar, but most seem to be around fifty percent of the overall town budget.
So our town budget, thirty-nine percent of it is the school? I thought it was closer to fifty-fifty.
We drew out the numbers, that's what we, and then we just want to talk a little bit about some of the unexpected expenses. We talked about these before, but you know, we kind of consider budget busters, move-ins, the students who move into town. And we are obligated financially to put them, you know, keep them in their placement. A placement could be, you know, considerably two hundred fifty thousand or more when they never step foot in one of our public schools. But again, they do the placements that they need and are most appropriate for them. That's tuition and transportation. So if you get a couple move in during the year, obviously a substantial increase. School choice decreasing. If we lose a hundred and fifty-five students over five years, that's five hundred seventy-five thousand dollar decrease in our school contributions portion. I mentioned the OSD increases at fourteen percent. Again, everyone in the state is concerned about this, but that's about a hundred fifty thousand dollars increases. I mentioned our EL students. Again, it's not just the students coming in, it's the services that they need. First-year students with no language will be ni, at least ninety minutes a day. So we've got to make sure we have the staff appropriate for that. And obviously aging buildings. We have three buildings, they're about sixty years old, about two hundred fifty thousand square feet of buildings. We have about fifty acres and many trees, especially around the Rose L McDonald. They tend to fall, it's the worst time. So, and pipes freeze and so forth. All municipal buildings have that, but we've got a lot of space. The equivalent to about two hundred twenty-five, two hundred fifty homes worth of space, if you look at it that way. So a lot of space that we've got heat and electricity through and, you know, roof and so forth.
Do you yell at the kids, make them turn off the lights?
Yeah, just like on the nursery thing. This is some of the positions we've added and we'll be, you know, transparent, we've added positions we needed, added positions. We've added classroom teachers, as was stated earlier. You know, we, we have mostly bubbles now. We're, we're getting more bubbles than not. We're keeping our fingers crossed about kindergarten, then we can stay with four and don't have to go to five. But the Rose L McDonald will be three, all three grades will be five next year. We have the space, but now we're losing specialist space where, you know, art on the cart and things like that, so it's, it's tough. We've got a social worker, again, to address a lot of our high needs concerns, the middle senior high school. Part-time special education teacher, part-time learning center teacher that went to full-time due to the needs of our students at the middle senior high school. We've got English and language learner teachers, both at the elementary and secondary. We've increased our speech and language to part-time, additional part-time, a behavior tech to deal with our needy students. Coda is a certified occupational therapy assistant. It's not, it's a assistant that works with an OT, so it's not as expensive, but needed. Due to our growing numbers of resident students, we've had to add a part-time preschool teacher and instructional assistant. We would have been out of compliance if we didn't add that this year, just to the growing numbers. We have to have an equal amount of special education students and play cows to run a program. Part-time middle school, school psychologist. I have my notes, don't worry. Uh, let's see, elementary instructional assistants. We are, I think, fully understaffed with our instructional assistants that work with our special education students. So we've had to add those, including one-to-ones that really meet the needs of our students. Part-time reading specialist, and we increased our spring street school nurse. These positions were added to grants such as Essar and just overall increasing our budgets. Again, these are not wishes, even not wants, these are needs that we have. And you can actually go to the next one, thank you. But we're not saying we're done. And I hate to say that. I know a couple of years ago, I said to this board of finance committee, when they said, well, what happens when Essar goes away? So we need, we need to find the money to fund these positions because they're needed. They're truly, truly needed. We're concerned about the cliff when Essar goes away, but we have special education team chairs who would work with special education teachers to work on scheduling, very important. Elementary adjustment council, we put in for a grant, so hopefully we'll receive that, so we can fund that on our own next year. And then elementary school psychologists. Right now, we have school psychologists at the Rose L and Howard, but they do all the testing, they do all the groups, they do all the lunch bunches, they do all the reading with kids, and then they also have to deal with kids that block in in crisis. So it's, it's a lot that they do. Additional special education staff and additional classroom teachers if we need to do the increases in enrollment. We'd love to keep them at four, but to keep some of these at four, we're talking class sizes twenty, thirty, and that's not acceptable. So where we're at with our budget. Total school budget is over nineteen million. If you subtract out the school contributions, school choice, grants, and revolving, it comes down to a subtotal of sixteen million four hundred forty-five thousand five hundred twenty-two dollars. Minus the amount that was approved last year is an increase of one million one hundred eighty-six thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars, or a seven point seventy percent increase. But when you look at the chapter seventy, and again, I, we understand this is a, last year, we got seven hundred forty-four thousand more in chapter seventy and we asked for seven hundred eighty-four, so it was a forty thousand dollar difference. We know that's a lot to ask for, but we're thankful that the state is recognizing the needs of our schools, of our students. And so if you look at it, when you look at the chapter seventy, it's actually a net decrease of seventeen thousand dollars less that the town has in it. In the next slide, it explains a little bit more. You'll see that, you know, look at the left-hand column, the total school budget, we're up seven point eight seven. That's a little bit higher than the seven point seven eight because of the two hundred thousand dollars extra that we put in for school contributions to push that up. But when you look at the burden of the taxpayers, when you take out the chapter seventy funds, it's a point one seven decrease. If you're looking at just the money, if you, I used the example before. You know, the government gives you a check with two thousand dollars and you go on a trip for nineteen hundred dollars, well, you, you've actually saved yourself a hundred dollars. You haven't really spent any money of your, your own money, so. That's what we're looking at. And then the last one, the last slide, talks on where, where are the increases? So additional staff, new hires or increases, about two hundred fifty thousand, which is one point six percent of our increase. Teaching services, which are two percent raised, plus our step and track, comes up to about three point one. Because teachers are always moving down and they potentially are moving over depending on their education. Our special education, our high district costs and transportation, two hundred eighteen thousand, one point four. Now this number again, could have been a lot higher if we did not decide to go with the sub separate. This number would have been potentially a couple hundred thousand dollars higher. And the new hires would have been a little bit lower, so you wouldn't have to have that staff. And then our EL services, we've added one and a half EL teachers into our budget this year due to our needs. Then there's a subtotal and then the net increases, other, you know, contractual costs plus increases. And other things about point eight percent. So that should be our overview. And I did create this year with the help of the committee, a budget book. Posted it on our website, sent out emails. It's now a twenty-eight page document with a lot of the same information in there, but a little bit more detail. Someone's not watching the presentation, but here, they can look through, they can read the information and hopefully answer some questions. Hopefully, we're at. And with that, we are, uh, open for questions. Here's the front page of our budget document.
Yeah, so in the past, I believe we, you know, really focused on going through the highlighting the changes in this document and I can give you more information for the larger percentages or anything that you are interested in specifically discussing. So I'm not, I'm not gonna read through it, so let me know what you, what items concern you and we can explain in more detail why the change.
The district technology.
Yep. Okay, so that increase of a hundred and twenty-seven percent. We have finally categorized correctly the director of technology. He had, his salary had previously been in middle senior high school teachers line. When we negotiated the new contract, we pulled that out of the teacher category and it is now an administrative position. So that is a bulk of the increase there.
Maintenance of buildings and maintenance of equipment seems to have gone up twenty-six percent on both of those.
Okay, so the maintenance of buildings, it increased from seventy-three thousand that we budgeted for last year to ninety-two-five this year. So it's an increase of nineteen thousand dollars. You know, on a percentage between budget to budget, that's large. You know, as a percentage of our overall budget, it's tiny. But what we've run into is the increase in maintenance costs, you know, more issues with boilers, more issues with HVAC, just more maintenance issues in our older buildings. And, you know, this is a line item that scares me because it's unpredictable on what's gonna break and it's very difficult to budget. But to date, now, right now, when I checked before we came in, we've already spent a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in this category and we budgeted seventy-three thousand last year. It's just the unexpected repairs. So that, that is a difficult one to predict. And then equipment maintenance, those are the contracts. So contracts on.
Copiers and.
Copiers, everything. And those have gone up significantly just due to inflation. Five percent was the least of our, the least, the lowest increase on contracts. But we also added about twelve thousand dollars worth of maintenance, preventative maintenance contracts on the boilers and the HVAC system to really try to stem some of the constant repairs that we've seen over the last year.
Yeah, I think my kids had to go to school, or some of my kids, I got so many, I feel like. But the boys had to go to school one day more than my daughter, I think, because the Rose L was closed and.
Generator issues, the generator that we, we got approved to have a new generator.
That's still drama in our house.
Yep.
That would have happened this year if I may have stepped into such a great job and the tires rode, they worked all day, Sunday. We did have to bring outside people, but they didn't outstandingly. But I thought it was gonna have to happen again, and it didn't.
You saved my family. The drama is silly.
Also?
Yeah, I have my questions, thanks.
I skipped this page and went right to the, so some of my questions might be a little more granular. So page two, superintendent's office, this is six percent increase.
Contractual.
And the super, that's contractual. How many year contract is that? Is that six percent per year?
No, that just is, is, you know, one bump.
One bump, a one increase? Is that like a market adjustment or?
It was what was negotiated.
Okay.
And again, you know, I, I appreciate you looking specifically in the detail. But I do want to keep in mind that that's a ninety-seven hundred dollar change on a sixteen point four million dollar budget.
Right, I understand, I get a few more, right. Like I said, I skipped that one, right to this. Uh, legal services, you look like you're underfunded? Is that because it's not a contract negotiation year?
Yes.
Okay, makes sense. Uh, textbooks.
And we contributed more from, out from our own contributions. So in previous years, we didn't contribute. So if you look at the school contribution, we're actually budgeting the same amount as we did in the previous year.
Yeah, that's.
Because we removed it from a general fund and we, we're, our school contributions are paid for.
So with this stack, this is only the town contribution portion?
Um, well, you just have to look, if you take, if you take a look, I'll go through the headings. You have the first two columns are the actual costs.
Right.
For those years. Last year's approved budget, this year's budget request, the difference between budget to budget between this year and last, percent of that difference. Then you can see the school contribution that we're putting in, so the total of the school.
Okay, so it's zero, it just has a zero on this first page?
Yeah, exactly. This is just a detail to the core of this page.
All right, thank you.
So did I read this wrong? So I read it as fiscal year twenty-one was seventeen thousand, legal services. Fiscal year twenty-two was forty-one thousand, but you're only budgeting twenty thousand?
No, we're actually budgeting twenty-five, but we're only asking the town for twenty thousand because we're using surround care funds for the other.
Okay. All right. But aren't you still, i- i- is that because you're not in contract negotiations, that's why?
It, this is another difficult number to nail down, but yes, we're not in contract negotiations.
For example, what's still still in our boss?
Right, we have, yeah.
Okay. So again, size of the budget, not a huge number, but there's like thirty-seven thousand dollars for textbooks. Are we ever going to get away from textbooks?
So that is, and what.
There's a good question, we, there's, there's, you know, there's a number of lines that.
Yeah, there's a number of lines that, like we discussed last year, contribute to that. Those are the principals' budgets. And so I believe you were on which?
Page nine.
Page nine, right. So you can't look, you have to look at page five, page nine, page ten, and page six. Principals' expenses, directional supplies, instructional technology, and the Howard School Monitor accounts. Those are the budgets that the building principals have control over, and they have a certain dollar amount that's been flat every year that they have, they have to divide between those types of supplies, textbook software that they need. So you can't look, if you look at it in an individual line like that, you're not going to get a true picture. Because for instance, the high school has a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to spend on those items. Where they spend it within those specific line items doesn't matter to us. I'm looking at the total.
Okay.
We did increase the total over all four buildings this year by thirty thousand dollars, uh, due to curriculum purchases.
And that's what I was going to say, a lot, a lot of that maybe related to the E L A curriculum, literacy curriculum. Uh, last year was funded through a grant, this year we have materials that we need to purchase, so.
So then, I was really disappointed in classroom supplies, the amount of money budgeted there. Because I think every year the parents are asked to help out with cleaning supplies and stuff like that, and I think it's, I don't want that.
Hmm.
I mean, I don't, I don't know any gentler way of saying it. I don't think we should be asking our residents and our teachers to reach in their pocket and buy the supplies they need. They need to get there, but I, I don't think we should be, I, I don't like that practice. I don't think it's fair to the taxpayers. I don't think it's fair to the teachers.
I don't disagree with you, but it's the state of education everywhere. Go to any district, I work in Sharon, it's a very, very affluent district. And parents are sending in tissues and lice oil wipes, it's, it's this country.
Yeah, it's wrong, so wrong.
But I don't disagree with you, I really don't.
Um, okay, so I'm just gonna jump over some things, and this is going to seem miniscule, but it, it might be a typo. So I thought maybe you'd want to look at it. Um, page eighteen. Just kind of stood out. Honestly, I didn't spend hours on this, I spent like ten minutes, I really did. Um, so on page eighteen, the high school phone. It's actual in, um, twenty-twenty-one was twelve thousand, and for some reason twenty-two is showing seventeen hundred. That's kind of weird.
Yep, it is, but the budget for twenty-two is exactly the total, is exactly what the town, um, gave us to spend. So it could have been a bill that, I don't know why.
Just doesn't, you know what I mean? I know that's when the town agreed to put in the budget for it, but it just, it's an anomaly, you know?
No, that is, that is not what the town agreed to put in the budget for. That's the actual amount that happened to be spent.
No, I mean in twenty-three, approved ATM was twelve one hundred.
You're right.
When the prior year, we only spent seventeen hundred.
And the previous year, we spent twelve thousand, so.
Right, it just seemed, it's something, and even when you compare it to the other phones, someone's making a lot of long-distance calls at the high school. You know, this, I mean, how do you explain that it's weird? Twelve thousand dollars?
I'll, I'll look into it.
I just think it was, looked like a typo or a calculation error. And then, you know, this, the sped trans, the, the special education transportation, that went, that doubled.
Yeah.
Yeah, which page is that one?
Yeah, that's page thirty?
As discussed earlier, you said that it's a huge variable cost, finding transportation, uh, obtaining transportation, uh, prices going through the roof, you know, they have to throw the three hundred seventy-five dollars a day to transport. So it's, you know, we need to, we need to transport students, we need to find ways, so. You know, hopefully we will, you know, be able to purchase a van that's going to help us.
Is that increase though, is that, uh, do you know something's coming up for, to, to double it?
What are you talking about?
So that's not the right page.
It's going up eighty-six thousand.
Yeah, that's page forty, I have page thirty. Let's see.
Oh, so this is, that's on the whole presentation there.
This is the page thirty.
Page thirty, special education, transportation.
Yeah, yes.
Um, it was actual one twenty-six, five oh five in twenty-twenty-two.
Three hundred and.
Fiscal year twenty-three, we approved three eighty-four. So I, I guess I'm comparing it to the actual in twenty-twenty-two, to the appropriation in twenty-twenty-four is four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars.
The transportation has gone up.
It's actually tr- more than tripled.
Yeah, it's a different students, different programs are going to.
So when we build the budget, what the director of student services will do is they'll look at the placements and they'll, you know, they'll budget out what the transportation will be. So they'll have, you know, ideas in place, so if a student has to go to Hanover, what the cost will be, and we'll build that right into the budget. So if, if, these are all, you know, pretty much quotes that we've received for the transportation for the additional services.
Based on the students that we have on, right now.
Oh, right.
At the, at the.
Right, this moment.
Yeah.
Do we know the actual for twenty-twenty-two? I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-three?
No, twenty-twenty-three, no.
A hundred and forty-three thousand, two, December seventh.
A hundred and forty-three through when?
December seventh.
Which represents three months of school, and we have seven, there are seven additional months of transportation. September, April, November, so December seventh, that represents maybe three months of transportation cost. So we have an additional seven months.
Plus the tiger, the gas prices, nothing else. That was it? Next time I'll look at the first page. I skimmed right by it, I was like, there must be something easier than this. Thank you.
Um, S R funds for this year, how much are you budgeting for use of the S R funds this year?
Zero twenty-four. I think we're at a hundred and seventy, roughly a hundred and seventy-five thousand, maybe one seventy-six.
And are they going to be available in twenty-five, when does that end?
I hope so. Um, I mean, so I anticipate, provided, I don't mean to use any to close, a twenty-three budget, we'll have about three hundred thousand for twenty-five. But that just depends with the averages we've seen so far this year, whether or not we get to accelerate that.
All right, but a hundred and seventy-five thousand is what the F Y twenty-four allocation is.
Yep. In, in this.
And again, our, our goal with S R, you know, districts don't want to use it for people, for, you know, not only pay people that ultimately have to pay for it in some way, uh, but also there's a nameplate surcharge they have to pay each person over time. Well, I'm just trying to think, that'll be a hundred and thirty-five dollars, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar cliff sometime in our future.
Yes.
Yep.
And unfortunately, most of that is for people right now, because that's where we have our greatest need.
Any more questions?
No, thank you guys, that was all.
No, we appreciate your support, and we know, and we know this is a lot, but we, these are our needs of our kids, so thank you for all you do, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you're asleep. Good, how are you? Good evening.
Good to see you.
Good to see you all. Get ready and down to us, correct? Yes.
Uh, it's probably my book, but it's one eighty-two.
Can I get a copy of the budget?
Yeah.
I can print one more. Would you mind? Yeah, just so I can put my notes on it.
Six.
Good, but yeah.
Snow, hot snow.
I haven't been up there. I, I haven't been up there probably, oh boy, a month and a half, but for the season, I think they're down altogether. They've got all the snow the last like three weeks.
Yeah, yeah, Monica, thirty-five inches.
Yeah. But it's.
Just missed it.
And it's been weird up there the past three years. They just, they're not getting the revenue, well, they're not getting the snow. So they're not getting the revenue that would typically derive from the snow sports. Um, so it's hurting them.
Snow machines, right? Yeah.
It's, you know, snow moved, uh, sled is big up there. So without doubt, the people coming up there, it's got the revenues just
True.
tough to watch. Um. But it's been good.
True.
I kind of liked not having to go up and shovel.
True. Well, I have a lot of snow, somebody plonked you up.
We have.
Take that to the house.
Uh, we have a ATV with a plow on it. So if we got stuck and if there was just too much to get up the driveway and the truck and the plow, I mean, you could grab the ATV and get down there and start it that way, but like I said, there hasn't been that much snow, so we've really not had to worry about it. Just go up there and, and you'll use the truck to plow.
Do we have others at home?
No, but that's where I went to a tablet, so, but we, um.
Well, all the other meetings, we've had them printed out, I'm sorry, I've been holding on to them for notes.
Yeah, I'm kind of happy that we didn't get much snow here.
It's been cold.
Like, last year or the year before, we did them all on, I did it all on the computer.
Yeah, we had some, we had some wind chills and the negatives and.
We had that weekend, that one weekend here where it was.
Yeah, yeah, we had some really cold weather up there.
That was cold. Okay, ready? All right, okay, first, first line, five one one one, that is a two percent increase contractual. Five one one two, two percent increase contractual. Five one one five, which is the permanent salaries. I'm requesting three additional full-time firefighter paramedics to round each group out at five. We added one last year, so we have one group at five and three groups at four. Crunching the numbers, we average about twenty-eight tones or box alarms per month. So that means we're relying on off-duty or part-time members to come in to cover the station or man an apparatus to supplement what we have going on. It's an antiquated staffing model. It's something, uh, that we should look at to address, that's why I'm requesting three. If we get to three firefighters additional, we'll have to be at five per shift. We'll be able to decrease that, um, need by fifty-five to sixty percent. It's, uh, people are busy, people aren't coming in. The station is being left empty while firefighters are out doing calls, which is kind of dangerous. Uh, just yesterday, we went to, um, Route twenty-four twice, and we had simultaneous incidents happen twice. So we summoned off-duty personnel four times yesterday, not storm-related. So it's hit or miss. Uh, today, we haven't had to do it yet, but it could happen tonight. Uh, yesterday it was four, and like I said, we average about twenty-eight per month, which is almost once a day. So that's the, uh, the request there. Um, for last year, we wanted to respond to grant, correct? We did not get a grant. Oh, we did not? No, we didn't. You're going against the city of Rockland, the city of Worcester, who are requesting twenty firefighters. City of Worcester got sixty-three firefighters, only requested one, which we're kind of low on the total poll with the federal government when we do that. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get that. If we get to five a group, that's called better staffing. We're able to get four firefighters out the door to Route twenty-four immediately while keeping our communications staffed and, uh, available. We're more efficient, the ambulances are running non-stop, we have two ambulances at the A L S level, and that's a lot to do with the summoning of off-duty personnel. When one ambulance transports, they're out of town for about an hour, for turnaround time. The second ambulance goes out, we have nobody in the fire station anymore. So we have to put a tone on to cover the station and cover our communications. Having five a shift, we'll be able to keep those communications rolling while also possibly or not possibly, depending on circumstance, summoning in tones. So it would be a better staffing model for us if we can get to that this year.
Who do you think the decrease would be in line fifty-one thirty?
It would be pretty substantial if we can just decrease total arms by fifty percent. You're never going to be able to decrease total arms or get rid of them all together because when we have, uh, very large incidents like, uh, structure fires or bad accidents, we have to get three, four trucks out on the road. So we're still going to have to summon, summon off-duty and part-time personnel. We'll just be able to possibly do that less by fifty percent.
Is tone alarm the new word for striking the box?
Yes. Yeah, I say striking the box, but people kind of look very like, so.
We know it from Lenny Hug, that's where I learned it, right?
Yeah, so we still, we still call it that, but I didn't want to confuse you, so. It's a tone, we put on a tone, you have a pager and a phone on your app, when that goes off.
Okay.
It's voluntary, it's not mandatory to respond to that.
Is it literally like a certain tone, and you guys all know?
Yeah.
That's how funny.
So that's that request. Um, the next one, well, the next three are for, um, two percent increases for vacation, holiday, and personal time along with, um, sick. Right now, we're over, uh, about seventy percent expended for sick time, we had somebody out for about three months. Um, so currently, we're over sick time, but we'll be able to manage with that. Uh, personal time, fifty-one thirty-nine is the additional firefighter for thirty-six hours of personal time. That's that increase of four thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars. Um, the next one, fifty-two ten, heating and fuel, I'm requesting additional two thousand dollars. Uh, currently, we are two, uh, we're seventy dollars over budget currently, but that's, I'm forecasting to be about twenty-one hundred dollars over budget this year, which is, uh, in line with last year. So we've, we've taken some steps in the station, you know, we, we don't put the heat on above sixty-eight degrees, you know, we're all wearing sweatshirts, so we're, we're doing what we can. But it was pretty, the substantial increase for the Eversource this year was pretty noticeable, unfortunately. So that's that request for an additional two thousand dollars. Apparatus recertification, five two four six, that's for a additional two hundred and twenty-five dollars to, uh, recertify the ladder truck every year, to be able to use it. So they increased the billing two hundred and twenty-five dollars, that's for that request. Fifty-four eighty, gasoline, uh, currently as it stands in F Y twenty-three, we're seven thousand dollars over budget as of right now. That's mainly due to the beginning of the fiscal year when gas prices were astronomical for us. You could probably say that we're busier, and we're using more vehicles, diesel, diesel fuel's the biggest culprit, not really gasoline. It has leveled out somewhat at, towards this timeframe now. Uh, but like I said, we're seven thousand dollars over budget as it stands to this day, and, uh, we were thirty thousand dollars over budget last year. So I'm requesting five thousand dollars to supplement that, those changes for the last two years. And lastly, fifty-five ninety, that's uniforms and equipment. That's tied to the, uh, three firefighter request, to, uh, give them uniforms and equipment. to, uh, give them uniforms and equipment when they would walk through the door at the fire station that I am mandated to buy. They, uh, they all get one thousand dollars for uniforms and, uh, PPE and equipment, and that's that request. And that's it. Questions?
No, I don't think I have any.
So I tend to focus more on what we spent in prior years versus what we requested last year.
Mm-hmm.
And you might have already said this link, and I might, I just may not have caught it, line fifty-one thirty-five was roughly a hundred and thirty thousand fiscal year twenty-two actual.
Mm-hmm.
But it were at a hundred and seventy-two thousand in fiscal year twenty-four request.
Mm-hmm.
It's a sizable difference, I'm not sure.
So it's hard to forecast that because all the new hires, their time off resets at their anniversary dates, not July first. So we have about five to six employees that reset July first for holiday time. They just got an additional holiday, which is now equal to thirteen holidays instead of twelve. Also, you can't really schedule when they're taking holidays off. So sometimes they can take it off before the fiscal year and it runs pretty close, other times they'll take it in the next fiscal year and it'll run over.
Do you know what it's to date in twenty-twenty, fiscal year twenty-three, do we know what the year to date?
It's about fifty-four percent expended, and I should be around sixty-one percent. So we're about within five or six percent under right now, currently. That usually changes in April, May and June when people, the, the firefighters that are ending June thirtieth.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll take their time off in April, May and June. But that's mainly due to, um, now our younger department, and a lot of the appointment dates are scattered throughout the year. So I can't really, uh, tell you how much time they're gonna take off this fiscal year compared to next fiscal year, because of their anniversary dates.
The other, and I, I could be wrong, could've been a dream, I don't know. I thought we talked, we knew we needed to increase staff, but I thought we kinda talked about maybe trying to stagger it.
Mm-hmm.
One a year, each year versus adding three at once, is, you, you don't think we could.
The need is there.
Okay.
Um, what I see on a daily basis is firefighters that are going out doing calls. The station being empty, which is a huge problem. Route twenty-four is almost every other day, which requires an engine and an ambulance response with two firefighters on each. What vehicle accidents are requiring, um, fire trucks to chase now, which is requiring four firefighters. Structure fires are happening, um, more often out of town.
Which way?
Yeah, we've been to about six in the past three weeks.
Wow.
And it's not in the town of West Bridgewater, but it's part of the mutually agreedance. So we're required to do more, um, like I said, the ambulances are always running, and the other issue was Rockland Hospital being closed. Uh, the firefighters are dealing with thirty to sixty minute wait times at the hospital, which is allowing two firefighters back in the station if another medical hits, that's empty again. So we're, we're faced with a need.
Okay.
And that's, that's why I requested three.
Fair.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
And, uh, we have the service, EPW Services Conference, beginning March first, survey motion to approve that.
So.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye. Um, vote on appointment for the, um, school building committee?
So I'd really like to be on that, because, well, there's a kind of a personal reason. When I was on finance committee, I was thinking it was fairly new, and I was not in favor of the new school, but I also felt like I was uninformed. Um, I should've been more informed. And I'm pretty sure I was going to school and everything else in my life at that point, so I didn't really have the extra time. So I, I'd like to do this, my, my biggest concern is the fact that if they have meetings during the daytime, I'm at work. So I don't know when they would be holding these meetings.
I would also like to do this, and I would be available during the day.
Okay.
Um, and I wouldn't mind doing it either, and I mean, we could always fill in for each other if one person were appointed. Um, Chris James can make it, that's me, I'm sure he would as well, Mary, or other ways around, um.
So can I do it, and then if I can't make it, you or Mary could back me up?
How long is this appointment?
Through the, assuming through, um, decisions made on the schools, if they did really.
Yeah, I mean, last time, I think it was five to six years.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd like to sign on for the five to six years.
I, I'd sign on for five to six years. So I, so, just so everyone knows, I sold my house today, and I planned to retire and move to New Hampshire. And I think we changed our mind and we're gonna stay in West Bridgewater now. That being said, I'm looking for a house, but I don't wanna spend a lot of money. So I might look for a short sale or something like that, so, you know, if you know of anything, feel free to let me know. For, you know, we're considering maybe Mattville Woods or, um, Westbridge Landing, if something's reasonable there that I can negotiate. So.
You roll them?
I do.
I can't believe you're right there, oh, you're so mean.
So we, we, you're stuck with me, and, and we sold our house to our kids, um, to kinda get them their inheritance now. Um, and we're living without, and they will never kick us out. So, I forgot I'm on camera too, oh, that was embarrassing, oh, well.
So how do we figure this out?
I'm not much of a secret keeper, I guess.
I mean, it comes down to vote, I mean. I'll concede myself and, um, Denise is the senior, more senior member, um.
So, and again, Mary, um, you know, if I can't make it, I'll call you ahead of time, I won't just throw it on you, you know, tomorrow I can't be there. Do they meet, I, I don't remember when they typically meet, but I think.
That hasn't been established last time, I mean, it's a, it's a sizable committee. So I'm assuming that once it does meet, then the committee will just have to kinda like self-identify what dates work, but.
Okay. And again, I can work, I, I've got plenty of vacation time and stuff like that, so it, it's not gonna kill me to take a day off from work.
Um.
So I'd like it.
I was on the last school building committee, so I have the experience from that, I joined it as a member of the finance committee. Um, and was really involved in the numbers, I really enjoyed it, I learned a lot in that process. I'd like to use my experience and be on the new school building committee. I have three kids currently in school, I think I have a little bit more day-to-day connection with the schools, not, not in a positive or negative way that you don't. I just think I have a little bit more, um, in touch with what goes on with the schools day-to-day, just because I have three kids going to it.
So I, I have concerns with the space at the school, I think it's some of the, 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 way the classrooms have been conducted are not conducive to learning. I think it's too small, um, in some areas, and I'm concerned with some of the uses of what used to be called public space, for lack of a better word, being actually used for instructional purposes, so I, I have concerns from that level. I only have my grandchildren in school, but this isn't a, this isn't a, I'm not looking at this as a, um, in a project that's going to affect the students significantly, because as far as I'm concerned, if you have great teachers, that's what you need to teach students, pretty all around you, yeah, that's nice to have, but it doesn't teach the students, the teachers do. The educators do, the parents do. So I want to see us build a nice building that's conducive to education, that's affordable. Um, one of the things I'm disappointed with in the current school is that we have a football field facing the wrong direction. We, I, we think we should've bought more long-term extended, uh, warranties, because we're running into problems. The, I think it was the high school heating system was like fifty thousand dollars a year we're putting into it for general maintenance, that seems huge to me for a heating system. Um, the con, it, it, correct me if I'm wrong, but the contract did include bleachers.
That's, I think that's correct.
Yeah, so, and I'm not picking on anyone for these, these things, I'm just saying I'd like to be, I'd like to be involved.
Oh, you have answers for each of those.
I'd like to do, I've never done it, um, and I'd like to do it, and I think I'm qualified.
I mean, I think, I guess it really comes down to how I vote, right?
It does.
Um, so.
It's all on you.
It's all on you.
It's all on you.
I'll say, I think my thoughts kinda align more with Denise, so for that reason, I'll take the motion to, uh, in Denise's opinion.
I'll second it.
Does the paper?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
All right.
Will you still be a backup if I do?
Of course, of course, yes.
All right. Moving down, uh, annual town report, you have to choose a picture.
So we normally use, um, you know, a standing photo of Memorial Park, something like that, but we're, this is a two thousand twenty-two board. And it was our two-hundredth anniversary, the recommendation from the office was to just put the insignia on it for the two-hundred. So we thought it just made sense for this year, obviously, if you wanna do something different, your choice, but we'll be going to print over the next month, so we'd like to just know if that's okay with you, if you want to do something different.
All right. Anyone have any thoughts or comments, or wanna put a picture, I'd be completely fine with it, Frank, I totally applaud that.
I have a resolution picture, but yes.
Oh, it's nice.
Isn't that fuzzy, or is it me?
It might be the projector.
Yes, the projector and it's also very.
Oh, sorry.
All right, is there a motion to approve that picture?
So who?
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
I.
Uh, next, we have public eye here, sir, I'm from the public, we want to speak.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
Um, I'm Don Kuperstein, I know there's a vote that's on, uh, tonight for four fifty-five. Um, with Angel Gardens and Kenny Kaminsky, I'm Kenny's lawyer, so I thought if you had any questions, I just went by and.
Right.
Okay.
But I didn't know where in the great scheme of things.
It's up next.
It is, yeah.
And you've been sitting there a long time.
Thank you, um, so David, if you wanna start?
Sure, so this here is, uh, sixty-one A, why don't we just switch right over to the map, please? Thank you, so you can see in the yellow area, uh, this is the land that is currently in sixty-one A, it's about thirteen and a half acres. Excuse me, it is landlocked, it's accessible from, uh, uh, other land that is owned from the Kaminsky family. Right now, being under sixty-one A, is under purchase and sale agreement for five hundred thousand dollars to Angels Garden, um, they are looking to purchase it. Uh, the other regulatory boards that are required to review have all voted to not exercise or recommend to the board that we do not exercise the option of the town to purchase it. So it was before you now, if you would like to purchase it, we'd have to tell me, we'd have to look for funds. Um, or if you do not wanna purchase it, then we will just send the obligatory declaration letter to the attorney.
And I wanna recuse myself from this vote.
Okay.
Was it recuse or abstain?
Whichever you prefer, but as long as.
You have a conflict?
Yes.
Recuse.
Recuse.
Is there a proposed project for, for the parcel?
Would you like to speak to it?
I'm sorry.
Would you like to speak to his question, if there is a proposed project for it?
After this, yeah.
Do you wanna come up here so you can hear this better?
Oh, did I, should I come up, all right.
Sure, sure.
All right. No, we put some of it, Trinity, in case your kids do throw you out.
You will help me, okay. It better not.
So is there anything proposed on the list?
Oh, uh, yeah, the garden angels, uh, wants to use it for planting starting stuff, so that he can go sell it in the abutting property.
A project? Okay.
So that's what it's for, cool.
This is, is this land landlocked?
It is. It is.
Yep.
So. I need to word this motion that we're going to exercise our right of first refusal.
Um, are you looking to purchase or not purchase?
No, no, we're not purchasing.
So the, the motion would be then to exercise your right to decline the first.
To decline the right of first refusal.
Is there a second, oh, sorry, uh, second, all those in paper?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone that hears?
Done.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Uh, next update is, it's just to let you know that we are progressing on the Lincoln Street Warehouse project, um, we have been meeting with, meeting with the developer. Chiefly Tracy, um, but we've been meeting with the developer, um, and so they're looking to move forward. They are looking to potentially grab their permit this week, um, I have now received confirmation that they have grabbed it as of today. But anyway, just giving you a heads up, that, um, the project is moving forward, um, and so at this point, they would only be doing the project for the building on the property. They're still awaiting the access permit from MassDOT to do any of the project on the road improvement, so they'll start the construction on the building. Their expectation is, is that it'll take about twelve months or so, and as soon as they get their access permit, they wanna stop building, start doing all the road improvements as well. Again, it's gonna be a challenge, there'll be a lot of traffic there, it's gonna be, you know, there'll be some difficulties, there's no doubt. But hopefully, at the end of the line, we're going to see additional lanes in Route one oh six. Uh, we'll see a sidewalk on the entire length of, of, uh, Lincoln Street, uh, and we'll also get Lincoln Street and Crescent Street lined up. So I think that the end result will be pretty, pretty good, um, and, um, obviously more tax-free than we're afterwards built.
But they can't use that building until the road works done.
So, um, as part of the TIF agreement, they have to perform the road improvement. So I'd have to see as to whether or not we type the certificate of occupancy to it, uh, if we didn't, then they're gonna lose millions of dollars, so that's why. That was the sticking point, was the fact that, um, the TIF agreement requires them to do it.
Right, so we need to make sure of that.
Yeah, I have to just check the, the paperwork, but the real, the real care was is that they're not gonna wanna lose two and a half to three million dollars. And they can't make the property marketable without the road improvements, so that was the whole extent of it from the beginning. And then, um, last is, is that I have, we've been inundated with, um, copious amounts of, of issues with speed in town. We did, all of you who are copied on it, we received an email from an unfortunate incident that occurred on Scotland Street recently. And I've said this multiple times, that there is no residents in this town, it actually felt worse for than once on Scotland Street between a forty B development that has gone in, into a place of all land that nobody ever thought would be developed, uh, to increasing of housing around the corner, and then obviously the, uh, blossoming of, of development in Bridgewater. Um, so they've seen quite a bit of increase in traffic, but they're not the only ones, we're receiving quite a bit of complaints from other side roads. Uh, we do attempt to use some speed enforcement with police, but they can only do so much, and the police force are only three or four per day. We can't have them just do speed enforcement on a daily basis, so we've been doing some research, what I would like to do, unless the board is against it, what I'd like to do is come back. Uh, we need to finish the budget, which is gonna be due, which is next meeting on April fifth, but the meeting after that on April nineteenth. I wanna present to you a draft policy about potentially putting speed humps throughout town, and I really, what I'm gonna be looking at through the policy is to empower residents to be able to make those decisions, so instead of, although it'll be your choice, but instead of the selective landing that we do on these roads, is we put it in a format where residents can actually petition, fill out the form, where would it go, also have a financial investment into it. And, um, I've spoken to a handful of residents about this already, and they all thought that was a really good idea, because they really wanna have the ability to be able to put their stamp on it. So we could put some of these speed humps, they're larger than speed bumps. Uh, we could put some of these speed humps in targeted areas, mainly in small residential communities. I think that we'll start to see that, um, those speeds will be reduced in those areas and. Hopefully, incidentally, what happened in Scotland Street could hopefully be mitigated in the future. So I'm now looking for a vote tonight, unless you guys are totally against it, uh, but I'd like to bring something to you in the future. I don't want this on.
So I, I spoke with Heather after we got the email and mentioned to her that this was something you had been. Thinking, I think about working on trying to figure it out for the past few months. Um. The, my only concern about the speed humps is that. Safety-wise, you know, we're gonna send people catapulting into the woods. I don't wanna do that. We'll probably need signage, or we really should have signage stating this is coming up, because it's unexpected to have, um. But I think something needs to get done. The traffic on that street's picked up a lot, and we did the heavy vehicle exclusion or. Is that what you call it, a heavy vehicle exclusion? We did that, but now that Amazon's opened up, so the P V D drivers. They've got a lot of traffic with that, so. And you, you can't exclude vehicles.
No, um, and the idea is, is that speed bumps, which are smaller in nature, you really almost have to come to a crawl to go over it. With a speed hump, they're actually designed to allow you to travel at about fifteen miles an hour or so over it. Um, so that's to speak to the concern about somebody hitting it really fast. Uh, but yes, I mean, this, if somebody hits it sixty miles an hour, um, they're probably gonna go somewhere that they shouldn't. But it's a thirty mile an hour road. They really shouldn't be going that fast, but. I agree, we have to, this is gonna require some additional time. I've already spoken to the police chief about it. I've already looked at our traffic engineer and spoke to our DPW director. This has been an ongoing process. Um, I am receiving quite a few complaints on other roads. Um, and, um, I think it's time for us to do something. So it sounds like overall, conceptually, you're okay if we progress with something like this.
I'm good, who would import with the discussion or exploration? I think Mastah and any other ones in.
Exactly.
To have what in the discussion?
Mastah.
Oh, oh, oh. I had never heard of this on public roads.
Yeah, no, I, I go to a meeting in Debenhams, they have them there because they're in a very large, really nice industrial complex. And without those people, we'd be traveling pretty fast. Other municipalities such as Framingham have started to deploy them as well. Um, and, um, it's becoming a little bit more common because they're just. The reality is, is that roads are getting better. Cars are better, tires are better. It's easy to go fifty miles an hour and not even know it. Um, and, and so we have to do something. Um, there was, in, in speaking to Heather, there was some discussion about potentially putting like solar panel street signs up. That was going to tell you what your speed is. But Brockton has a whole handful of those, and again, speaking to the chief, what they really have become is data collectors. They're not really slowing speeds down.
The, the data is phenomenal. The, the reporting that was attached to that, that the increase it showed, I think it was after like three o'clock. It, it was incredible how much the traffic increased on that road.
Yeah, so, but it hasn't reduced speeds.
And I think there were some people, I think seventy-three miles an hour. There were some stats on that. People traveling seventy-three now in Scotland.
Sometimes do put temporary ones in to keep them in the winter for while.
So yeah, so we looked at that as well, um, and, or will be looking at it, but you're right, that has been part of the conversation. Uh, DPW thinks that they'll be okay to plow with it. Um, and, um, but there are concerns about every time you put it down, place it back up. It does, you know, it's not, it doesn't stay, it's not as good.
Yeah.
Um, and, and then you have to store it.
Yeah, they do move, they can.
Exactly.
They have temporary?
Yeah, they're not temporary, semi-permanent.
Um, but you're right, there, there are, there are some that aren't permanent. But you do have to place them, remove them and store them in the meantime. Um, and, and then obviously if we end up, 'cause I wouldn't be surprised, based on the feedback that I've received. I wouldn't be surprised if we have half, I don't wanna say half a dozen, but we have at least a handful of roads that we end up putting these in. So if we put two or three per, say, five roads, that'd be a lot of manpower to be pulling them up, putting them back down. But it is something that we'll have to consider and ultimately it'll be whatever you prefer.
I mentioned a date the other day, I started, I was researching, were rumble strips? So you get an audio warning as well as a.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and, and most of, every, I didn't spend a lot of time on it, but everything I found was mostly. You know, placing them down the side of the road, if they use the highway. But I started to read D O T and it's just way over my head, whether or not you can place them across the road. But this is probably a better idea, I think.
No, I just, I just wanna make sure that conceptually you guys were okay, we at least explored it. Um, and, um, and try to do something. I think we owe it to our. There are too many residential roads where there's, they're seeing really increases in speed. Try to do something to help.
Good, um. With that being everything, I would introduce a motion to enter into the executive session, not to return to open session for purposes of conducting a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically only non-union contractual employees under the direction of the Board of Selection. Is there a motion?
So.
Uh, race yes?
Uh, so.
So. Sorry, sorry.
If those in favor?
Anderson, yes.
Race yes.
Getting a yes right now, we're saving the session.